Okay, good evening. I'd like to call to order the January 16, 2018 council meeting. Please stand for invocation while by the Pledge of Allegiance. Bobby, if you please do us the honors.
Father God, we thank you for this day, Lord, and we thank you for giving us another day. God, we thank you for letting us all arrive here safely in all this cold and the ice and the snow and all the things we got going on. God, we thank you that we are able to continue to work and today to do your business and do the things you would have us to do. Bless each and every council person that is present. Be with them, be with their families, watch over them and continue to protect them and continue to keep them safe. We ask you as always to please be with our first responders, watch over them and keep them safe. And God, we also want to remember our persons who take care of our streets, Lord, that have been out in this cold and late nights and making sure there's salt on the streets and the streets are clear that we are, can arrive back and forth safely to work. Thank you for all the persons present. Be with them. We ask you to help, continue to be with our community, be with our mayor, be with our governor, be with our president, be with our nation. Continue to help us as we celebrate this MLK birthday and this 50th year anniversary of his passing. Continue to watch over us and keep us helpless to be what you would have us to be. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
(inaudible) United States of America and in the Republic which stands one nation under God in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bobby. Row call, please. Councilperson White.
Present.
Councilperson Yon.
Present.
Councilperson Maples.
Here.
Councilperson Hawkins.
Here.
Councilperson Gill.
Here.
Councilperson Owen.
Here.
Councilperson Ellis.
Here.
Councilperson Samuel.
Here.
Let the record re-let eight council members are present. Okay, Ed is traveling for business. Can I have approval of the minutes for regular proceedings for January 2nd, 2017, please?
If there are no additions or changes, I make a motion that we approve the minutes and submit it.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Can I have the approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Claims to be approved. General. Heather, are all claims in order?
Yes. Civil city claims tonight are $953,981.52.
No questions. Motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Parks, please. All claims in order?
Yes. The park says $52,068.75.
I did have a question that I forgot to ask about.
What page?
Nobody here is going to be able to answer the question, but page one, about halfway down, $620 is for Duffy's Landing dredging permit. We had discussed that being, the dredging being handled by the Board of Works by Andy in his department. I'm okay with approving it, but I just wanted to clarify if that maybe should be coming out of Andy's budget or if it should in the future.
Yeah, I think the permit was already applied for before we had the discussions of moving it, but we can clarify for that, but you bring up a valid point.
I'm okay with the expense going through because that's how it's traditionally been handled, but in the future.
Is that, it says 2017 dredge permits. Is that for this year or is that from last year? Does that make sense?
I don't even know, honestly.
Because that would be another thing, too, if it were for last year, then it would make sense that it were.
There are no other questions. I make a motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second to approve the parks claim. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Report of the clerk.
So, question about that, though. It's okay for the expense to come out of here, but you want me to check to see if it's being handled by the engineering office?
I'll follow up on it. It's okay for you to process the claim.
Okay.
I'll follow up for my question.
Okay.
Sorry.
I have none. Then we go on to unfinished business, and Mr. Merkley sent me a text. He was unable to meet with the city engineer, so he was requesting that we table that for tonight. So, do I get a motion to table?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Heather, we have 2018 OR2 ordinance transferring certain funds within the same department. This did pass from the first and second. Is there any changes?
No changes. It's for the design work for the new chapel.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Passed 2018 OR2 on the third and final reading. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Heather, you're still up for the ordinance of additional appropriation, 2018 OR3. Is there any changes?
No.
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead unless there's questions from council. I'm gonna go ahead and open up a public hearing. This time they opened up a public hearing on 2018 OR3, which is additional appropriation for the parks improvements. Is there anybody here to speak for or against? Seeing none, I'll officially close, and I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve on the final reading.
Second.
Got a motion, second passed 2018 OR3 and third and final. Any further discussion?
I'll just add, I was not at the last meeting, but I was in this meeting where we discussed these different play futures, and this was my favorite option as well. So, I think it was the best use of our funds.
And this is for half, and the other half will come to you at the end of February.
So, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to new business, which is Kim Calabro, the ordinance amending 2017 OR69 and the ordinance fixing the salaries of appointed officer employees for all departments.
So, what ordinance number will this be? Four. Thank you. Okay. On page three, you will see the changes under the fire rank. The budget that we are, the salary ordinance that was presented in November to go to the state was reflective of what was in their collective bargaining agreement, which was not in line with the parity. So, by the time, when we got the contract, we brought it to their attention, I think brought it to Lisa's attention, they had to go back and make some changes then through collective bargaining. So, but because the collective bargaining agreement stood, we had to make the salary ordinance to reflect what was in the CBA. So, they've done their amendments to change that, to make it correct, and this is reflective of what it should be. There's an addition on, under the mayor's office. He and Lisa have approached me about wanting to make the administrative assistant an executive assistant, so it would go from a pay grade three to a pay grade four.
Yeah, and I wanted to stress that it's only under the mayor's office that has this position. I do know that there's a position under, in wastewater, but we didn't want to, being the administrator, want this position. We don't want all the other departments to think, well, we're gonna move our I2s or whatever to executive.
Typically, it's an executive assistant because we only have basically two executives per side.
Exactly.
Okay. So, and then on page four, this was just an omission from before. If you look at 2017 OR40, when we were presenting the budget or the salary ordinance back in 2017, Paul had originally, he was gonna bump this up to two people, so we had had a two next to it, and just inadvertently, when we went back and changed it from two back to one, it erased the whole line. And it is in the budget, so it's just, it was an omission on this ordinance. And that's it.
I'll make a motion to approve 2018 OR4 on the first and second reading.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Passed 2018 OR4 and the first and second. Any further discussion?
I have some, I think there's something that we added that changed, or it could not amend to the building authority board. Is that, that's new to this, too, correct?
Where are you at?
Where are you at? Did you say board, building authority?
Building authority board, that's also new.
Yes.
For transparency reasons.
And the secretary's position. Thank you.
Those are new to this ordinance?
I thought we already, we already did that.
We already approved those on this ordinance?
These were back in November.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the things that are highlighted are only the things that are different from what we submitted to the state.
But those were new positions.
But not new to, okay.
We've just seen this so many times, we've forgotten.
So, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Heather, we have an ordinance transferring certain funds within the same department.
This is for the spring tree planting, the Planting and Placemaking Improvement Fund.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve 2018 OR5 on the first and second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Passed 2018 OR5, first and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Heather, you're still up for an additional appropriation. Our public hearing will be February 5th at 2018.
The, this is due to the salary ordinance that was approved. I forgot to add the Social Security and Empress amount on there, so that will be on another ordinance that will come in the future at the next meeting.
Okay.
Because it was only advertised for the two $10,000s.
Okay. We'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve on the first and second.
Got a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Passed 2018 OR6 and the first and second. Any further discussion?
Hold on. Okay.
That's the $10,000.
Yeah, I got you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
I would like to say one thing on this, because this is an ordinance that we already, we approved and given the mayor and the clerk an additional raise, basically. I will support this additional appropriation.
On the next ordinances that have the Empress and Social Security, do you want me to have those on a separate ordinance so that you can vote separately on those?
No, I'll support them.
Have them all together with, because there be other requests, too.
Can we just add those to this ordinance?
Add their?
No, because it was advertised at just the 10.
Oh, okay.
I have to have it in the paper.
Right, okay.
I would say just a separate for Social Security and Empress.
Yep.
On a separate ordinance from any of the other requests?
Yes.
Got it. Okay.
Okay, and Heather, we have an ordinance for additional appropriation, and public hearing for that will also be February 5th, 2018.
And this one is to appropriate the cash that's already in the Spring Street Master Plan Implementation Fund. And the total for the two, one is for the engineering and design, the other part is for the construction of the Clayesburg area, is a total of 1.665.
Do we know how, how much is left in that fund?
That's appropriating all of the cash that's in the fund.
What's this number?
Seven, seven.
Motion to approve 18 OR7 on the first and second.
Got a motion and a second to pass 2018 OR7 on the first and second reading. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Moving on, we will go to our city council, our board appointments. I think I have all of these here written down.
I have a sheet if anybody needs me to go make a copy real quick or anything.
Well, you follow along, see, I just kinda handwritten what I knew. If we leave anything out, just kinda, I know solid waste, which I'll continue on on that being as president, so.
You've got the building authority.
Oh, you wanna go down in a certain order? I didn't know. I just wrote.
If it's okay, well, it's better to go down.
Okay, that's fine. You wanna just?
Call them off.
Call them off.
Okay. On the building authority is Brandon Westerfield, Don Spritzel, and Bill Frye.
But we have to replace Brandon Westerfield, or is he serving on the two boards, or didn't he?
Expressed an interest in wanting to stay on, but obviously doesn't want to do anything wrong. I'd have to, all indications, I didn't see a problem with it. And I know he's been an asset to the vote of commission as far as saving some money on lighting and things like that.
Is the question if there's a conflict of interest of serving on two boards?
Not that I know of.
As long as he doesn't have a. If the ordinance doesn't prohibit it.
Uh-uh, I don't think it does.
If he's willing to serve, then I'm fine with that.
And he doesn't have any, like, conflict of interest. Yeah.
Are we?
We're gonna do one at a time?
That's what I was gonna ask. Are we gonna do them by board?
They all three need to be reappointed?
Yes, yes.
Can I make a motion that we reappoint all three?
Second.
So, I have a motion and a second to appoint Don Spritzel, Bill Frye, and Brandon Westerfield to building authority. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Now, you have the insurance committee with Ed Zestovny and Lisa Gill.
Motion to reappoint.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Next is parks authority. Councilperson Owen. Matt, are you still willing to serve?
If you'll have me.
Make a motion to appoint Matt Owen.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Plan Commission. Councilperson Gill, councilperson Zestovny, and councilperson White. Somebody else wants, somebody else wants to step up? I'll gladly, uh, no?
Did Ed want to stay?
Yes, Ed did tell me he wants to stay. He said for the insurance committee and planning and zoning.
Mr. White, you said you wanted to stay.
Mr. White, you said, yes, yes.
Motion to reappoint all three.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Next one is Police Merritt, Scott Aldridge. I haven't heard yea or nay if he wants to stay.
Yes.
Okay. Yes? Okay.
Motion to approve Scott.
Second. Got a motion and a second, Scott Aldridge for Police Merritt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Public Arts, everybody still has time. If you want me to read them off, I will. Okay. Redevelopment, councilperson Owen, councilperson Hawkins. I think they both are willing to serve, so I'll make.
I would like to stay.
Make a motion to reappoint.
Ron, did you want to serve on development?
I think that Scotty and I had talked about that, and I think Scott has some projects that he would like to see finished, so I support Scott in that.
Okay. Sewer Board, I'm sorry. Did I have a motion and a second?
A motion. Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Sewer Boards are, is done until 19, so those, so is UEZ. The only one is now, is Drainage. And that would be District 5. Yes, I'd like to appoint Bob Rogie. I have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
Are we approving them all?
No, we already did that. You asked out.
I missed.
Yeah. Yours got reappointed last meeting.
Okay.
Do we need a row call or anything?
I guess so.
Hold on just a second. I just gotta write this on here. Councilperson White?
No.
Councilperson, councilperson Yon?
No.
Councilperson Maples?
No.
Councilperson Hawkins?
Yes.
Councilperson Owen?
No.
Councilperson Samuel?
Yes.
Councilperson Ellis?
Yes.
Councilperson Gill?
Yes.
Well, it's four to four, so guess you wait till next meeting.
So, let me make a quick observation.
I don't know what's going on.
So.
That's like there's four people on one board and four people don't.
Ordinance 2011 OR76 is the ordinance that you're operating. Mickey, you're just gonna show me how to do this magical year. It seems to me that that ordinance is kinda drafted in an interesting way, but it seems to say that everybody has the ability to appoint one person, and I'm not so sure you have an acclamation for that person. But here's what I'm gonna say, that's not my definitive answer because I don't, I can't.
Are you suggesting that the appointments for the Drainage Board don't need to be approved by the council?
I don't think they do. And let me tell you why, and again, this is just reading the ordinance that I'm looking at. It says that, uh... Council members for District 1, 3, 5, and 6 shall appoint one member to the Jefferson Drainage Board. The initial appointment shall take place January 9, 2002, yada, 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 expiration, and it's the staggering language. The council members for districts 2, 4, and 3, 2, 4, and the 3 at large shall appoint one member each, and said members shall serve for two years with their term beginning January 9, 2012. All board members serve at the pleasure of the council member that appointed said member. At the first regular meeting each year, the.
What does that say?
Oh, no, this is, at the first regular meeting each year, the Drainage Board shall appoint its members.
Okay. They have not complied with.
But I guess what I'm saying is, the way I read thi, and again, so I have access to the database to be able to double check things, it looks like the meaning that you all have been given authority by this ordinance created and amended in 2011 to choose a person who serves at your individual will. And quite frankly, and I'm not getting paid for this statement, I don't guess, I find that to be odd and weird.
Do we have the authority to give ourselves that authority?
Well.
Without the rest of the.
What does the state statute say about?
Well, and I haven't looked at it because today was the first day that that question was raised. Scott and I talked about it briefly, and I talked to Lisa about it briefly, because I don't, to me, that strikes me odd, that you all have the ability to pick a person and no one has the ability to vote no to your person.
I think that's reading into it. That doesn't say anything about that. We shall appoint, if you, let's look at it on a federal level, the, it's a little bit different, but the president appoints, the Congress must give consent. We're appointing, but we're asking, but the council approves it, like all the others.
There's plenty of instances where the president appoints and doesn't need congressional approval. So, with the dearies of Larry, if it doesn't say that we need to approve it, you wouldn't need to, I don't think that's right, but I would agree with that.
I guess I would look at the language of the other appointments and say, it would say the council shall appoint, right? And in those cases, the council votes.
So, and then in that same statute, whereas the body of the advisory board has, has been made up of or in part seven members and you expanded it to nine, but that happens because of moving to the second-class city.
Yeah.
It says, uh... Whereas the council believes that every member of its body should have representation on the advisory drainage board and should be expanded in accordance with the council's expansion, and I, I mean, I don't disagree with what you're saying, Dustin. It seems like that's odd language. It almost implies that the representative is each member's representative. And then you have the ability to, if you read it that way, each of you have the ability to kick off the person you choose at your own discretion and will, which really is kind of.
Doesn't have a.
This is oddly written.
Well, it's just an appointment form that can be removed with cause or without.
It's without cause by the member, if you read it, if you read into it, if your individual members are allowed to appoint, then each individual member is allowed to.
We have no other board, this is a question, that we have no other board that, that each, that has stated that each of us select our own.
Right.
I didn't, I didn't think so, and that's, yeah.
Which...
So, can you finish reading what you just read? Can you reread it, read all of it?
Which, which part of this?
The part where you said the council, whereas the council.
Well, let me read it off. So, it starts out, and it's an amendment, whereas the City of Jeffersonville through the Sewer Board operates a wastewater sewage utility known as the Jeffersonville Sewage Utility. Whereas the common council of the city hereafter of the council in 1997, bound through ordinance 97 or 73, created the Advisory Drainage Board. Whereas over the years, the council has amended different sections of the ordinance as necessary. Whereas the, this piecemeal approach has fragmented the applicable sections as to the creation, duty, and authority of the Advisory Drainage Board and should be combined into a single, singled comprehensive ordinance. Whereas the body of the Advisory Drainage Board has been made up of, in part, seven members who were appointed individually by each of the seven members of the common council of the City of Jeffersonville. Whereas on January 1st, 2012, the City of Jeffersonville became a second-class city, and the State of Indiana will have nine council members representing its citizens. Whereas the council believes that every member of its body should have representation on the Advisory Drainage Board and should be expanded in accordance with the council's expansion. Whereas the council believes that such a group should include representatives of each of the six geographic council districts in the city, as well as the representation from the fringe areas over the Jeffersonville Plan Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals that exercises zoning power.
And this, what year was this?
This is.
2011.
2011.
Do we have anyone that knows the intent of what that language was? That's on the board. I just, it was a shot in the dark, but I was just curious what the intention was.
Well, and so as I've read it, in some respects, it doesn't even say that, if you, if, you know, Dustin's District 1, it says that every council member should have a representative, but then it doesn't mean.
It doesn't require the geographic.
Yeah, it doesn't. Which, I mean, and I don't know, and gosh, if Wes was here and he wrote it, then I would be more critical because Wes would be kidding me. I mean, I don't know who wrote it, and I, and again, I don't know what it was.
Scott.
Scott Lewis? Oh, I take everything back. I've received all, that's a compliment.
All right, let me just call up Scott Lewis.
So, so then it says, now let it, now let it be ordained, the common council that. The council hereby creates the Drainage Board to advise and assist the Board of Public Works and Safety. For the following, overseeing and facilitating implementation of drainage plans or systems of the city, periodically reviewing and updating any such plans or systems, seeking funds to finance the implementation, creation, maintenance, or likely any such plans, advising the city boards, officers, and commissions concerning drainage matters. Jeffersonville Drainage Board shall be composed of nine citizen members appointed by the common council of the City of Jeffersonville pursuant to the ordinance Zestovny. I agree. So, there it says, appointed by, the City of Jeffersonville pursuant to its ordinance, shall be appointed, nine citizen members appointed by the common council of the City of Jeffersonville.
So, there it's not appointed by each city?
And then, but then it goes on. It says, the council members for District 1, 3, 5, and 6 shall appoint one member of the Jeffersonville Drainage Board. The initial appointment shall take place on 1/9/12, and each, each shall serve until second Monday of 2013. At the ex, and then the council member for District 2, 4, and the 3, council members at large shall appoint one member each, and said members shall serve for two years, and their first term beginning January 9, and then begin the second term in 2014. Each subsequent appointment may present this section shall be for two years. All members serve at the pleasure of the council member that appointed said member.
So, they.
So, you kinda go.
So, it's their decision to remove that?
The ordinance itself is, seems to be contradictory.
I feel like if the intent was to have the entire city represented, then it should be by geographic location of that representative and maybe not necessarily by the council member. Does that make sense? Like, if the goal was to have representation of each district on the board, then I feel like it should be that person living within that district, not necessarily the councilperson that appointed them. But maybe that's.
That makes sense.
I know it doesn't say that, but I feel like if that's the intent, then maybe that's what it should say.
And honestly, I, I mean, until there was a discussion about, I had not read the full ordinance, so. Kinda like the other one, Matthew.
Well, the council makes the appointment. The council, I mean, we, we suggest an appointment, then the council votes on it.
And is that how you did the other act? Till that, till now? Is that how you did it?
Yeah.
So, then, that seems to be.
I think this is the first time we've ever had, it usually goes on what council wants their appointment to be. But I have no problem moving this to the next meeting since it was four to four.
So, can I make a suggestion? Would you all like me to write this a little bit differently to make it pretty clear?
How do we want it, how do we want it to read?
That the council makes the appointment.
So, do you all want it to be that each individual member presents a.
Their appointment.
Candidate. Candidate.
That's my view.
And that council, the body as a whole, either...
It's the right to vote yes or no on that candidate.
Okay, so, so then what about the geographic thing?
I have, I have a different view. If it's my, I don't agree that you should tell me who my one appointee is. If I want person X, I don't believe that you should be able to tell me. Now, I'm one of many people sitting up here, but if I was putting it to a vote, I don't think you should tell me, because let's say that there were one person who was of one party, and everybody else was the other, well, we could just freeze you, if there were five of us, we could just freeze you out. I mean, you could just be denied every, that appointment, so I'm not for that.
I kind of agree, because I don't know why the four are, or what, whatever. All I know is why, I know, going to drainage, I know what kind of appointment he is, I know him personally, I know he can read the plans, he does a great job, I know he represents me well.
And another point, I don't even know who we're talking about here, so I have no say one way or the other, but another point is, if, how can I say this without someone... I probably said it, the little voice is telling me I've said enough, just...
We can move this to the next...
Listen to the other little voice. Yes, I just, we'd all, I mean, I'd like to hear what he has to say.
So I guess my question is, do you guys, do you all want me to prepare two different versions of this ordinance for you to consider?
Well, I don't think we should pass the buck to the next meeting, I mean...
It also says in that ordinance that, that I can remove my person at my leisure.
Correct.
So that means everybody could vote in somebody else for me, somebody I don't want, and I go, he's gone, vote in another one, he's gone, and we could just, like, play this round about ridiculous.
I agree with that.
Well, and, and that's why I brought up the question of the intent, because if the intent of having every person appoint a representative is so that each geographic area is represented, then I don't think that language is actually achieving that mission, you know?
Oh, let me be contrarian once again. I don't think that my, my person doesn't live in my district. He's my neighbor, and he does a fantastic job, but there was somebody I couldn't pick who worked for the Army Corps of Engineers that lives in, I think Ed's district, who already had an appointment, who would do a fantastic job. So I don't think they're necessarily representing a geographic interest, that's my job. If they're not representing my, the geographic interests of my district, then I have the ability to just go, no, you're gone, I will find somebody to do that. I think they should be able to be picked from all over the city, because what if there's, you know, there's more than, that there's many very qualified people in Scotty's district, we're limiting ourselves to the number of people we could pick from there.
I agree with that.
All the Drainage Board votes on all the same thing, it's not like, we have, and if we have drainage issues in our district, it's actually the city engineer and his staff that goes out. The Drainage Board doesn't go out and solve any of those drainage issues. It's the engineering drainage department, Matt Bell, or Andy, or whatever that goes out there, so...
Well, I don't think we'll have a situation where, I mean, yeah, we can remove them at will, but we're removing the person that you suggest, or you would be removing the person you suggest, so I don't think that would be a thing that you would do every other month. I don't think that's likely, but it's definitely possible.
Well, as a member of the council at large, we don't represent any specific geographic district, we represent the city as a whole, so we should not be held to a standard of having to represent someone that lives in the district that I live in, because I represent the whole city.
And I would suggest that the at-large members have at-large appointments. I mean, I wouldn't confine that to the district.
Tom Campbell, which was my current one, didn't live in my district, and he served me very well.
That's okay, my, my point was just that, I wanted, that's why I wanted to know if that was the goal, because if that's the goal, then maybe there's better language to suit that goal. I think at this point, I, it make, I think I agree with Scott in that if we want it to be an individual appointment, then keep it an individual appointment.
So, you guys, so, so you want me to...
Well, we've been doing it wrong since 2011, is what you're saying?
No, we've been doing it according to statute.
It's unclear.
Larry's proposing a change to the statute.
No, I'm not proposing to change the statute, I'm just saying, do you want, I'm just saying, do you want to do something? We read it, I mean, you all...
I mean, somebody brought up the point of the intent in 2011, I don't think that we've been doing this process any differently since 2011, and in sometime between 2011 and now, they changed this process, so I think the intent is exactly how we've been conducting it, because I don't think it changed in between that time. I mean, this is the way, nobody came up one year and said, we're gonna change the way we do this, and that, that was written, and we're still doing that kind of vote, so I think the intent is exactly how we voted on it tonight. But I'm not an attorney.
Well, and I don't have a, I don't, so let me just say this, and then they come back to me, I really don't care what you do, I really don't care who gets appointed anything. I'm just trying to...
So what is the...
Make it work the way you want it to work.
So the way it's written, in your opinion, is it the majority of the council appoints nine people, or I, as a council member, recommend somebody, and it gets voted up or down? If it gets voted down, I appoint somebody else, gets appointed?
I agree with Dustin.
Is that...
When Dustin, when we read that paragraph that says, the Jefferson Drainage Board shall be composed of nine citizen members appointed by the common council. You are the common council, you appointed, but I also believe when you read it, it says that each member gets to...
Choose who to appoint.
...pick anything.
Okay.
So, so then I think that...
If we're gonna rewrite it, that, like Scott proposed, as, you know, I get to pick my candidate, nobody gets to tell me no, then we shouldn't be voting on it, because I'm, I'm not gonna vote for somebody that I think represents...
It should just be...
I just removed this subject from the board last, last meeting, so I'm not obviously gonna vote for him, because I have to, because somebody, I'm reading the ordinance that way. So if we're gonna do it that way, then let's just everybody pick one and not vote, because I'm not gonna be forced to vote for somebody that I don't think represents me well.
And I think what you're saying, I mean, I see, there is a certain degree of absurdity.
And I, I kind of, I disagree with Scott's approach, that, you know, I think we're a good group here, and we don't always agree on everything, but we try to, but I would like to have the opportunity to say, no, I don't agree with this appointment, because they are representing the city, and so if I have one person sitting on this board that I don't think, sitting on the city council, that I don't believe representing the city council wrong, I've gotta just take his appointment and, and, you know, grit my teeth and bear it while he's representing us, I would like to voice and say, no, I don't want him representing us. And I think that's the point of the whole government.
Yeah. And now with respect for you, I would honor that removal and not present that for you to vote on again.
And here's what I'm gonna say, again, I'm not in, I'm not in your debate, I'm just looking at it for the legal...
Right, I understand, I'm just expressing my opinion, because everybody else has given theirs on it, so...
So here's what I think, I think that Dustin's right, that that paragraph says, Jefferson Drainage Board shall be composed of nine citizen members appointed by the common council of the City of Jeffersonville pursuant to this ordinance as adopted. That means that they require a majority vote. I think that this ordinance says that District 1, 3, 5, and 6 shall appoint one member of the Jeffersonville Drainage Board. I think the word "shall" is misplaced. I think that if, that in order for number two to be correct, it said, shouldn't say the council members for District 1, 3, 5, and 6 may, or shall recommend...
I think it should be...
...one of the members of the Jeffersonville Drainage Board subject to the approval.
Or even the word appointment should be...
Right, it shall nominate.
But it wasn't written that way.
If you leave "may"...
It's not written that way.
Yeah, they put, when they put the "shall" in...
This is why I go to loss.
That's superseded. The "shall" creates a duty for each of us...
We have to put someone in there. If we leave it at "may," we can say, we're not even gonna appoint that person.
So then, then the next step is, if they're serving at the will of the person that omniogates them, then I think Mr. Hobbins is correct, and you can sit here and go, not that coach, not that coach, and he can sit there and...
All right, here's another suggestion.
Nix it.
Can I...
I think just because somebody would vote it down, we shouldn't have to change the whole ordinance.
And how you all did with the other boards, you went through and voted on each one individually. On the Drainage Board, you all presented your names, and you voted on them as a group.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I appreciate that, but that's not what...
No, I'm just telling you how...
My question is, now you've got a place where you have four to four, and you got a tie of vote, and you got to turn back and do it. Now I'm looking at this...
It seems, it seems to me that there, that if, it, the intent is for each council person to, to select their own person, and, and the initial part, it said, we have to vote on it, if that person gets voted down, then that council person could go select another person, not be told who to select.
Right.
But then the second one, they put another name up, and it, I mean, this has, has never come up, has it ever?
No.
I mean, to your knowledge, I don't know.
Never had it, but...
And I mean, I understand there's, there's other circumstances.
They moved a board and placed it back on the same board, and...
Yeah, no, I mean, there's...
It's been on drainage several times.
There's outside circumstances.
Matter of fact, Bob Rogie was appointed by somebody else, and Connie appointed him when they went off.
Yeah, there's, there's kind of some outside circumstances on this case, but, but it, I mean, I, the reason I was, where I was on it is, I feel like every person gets to select who that is, and now if we don't, if the board doesn't approve, approve that, okay, then that council person puts forth another name.
They still have the choices.
I would encourage you to, if you can clean it up, that's one, one way to try it, and there may be another, two or three.
I like the process as it stands, you select your candidate, and then it's voted on.
That's what you're saying.
You make some calls, and you talk to these council people.
Yeah, but can, can he clean that up any, to make it clear?
You're saying that the autonomy of the appointment still lies with the council person, because you have the choice to choose the second person, if the first one's not approved, or whatever.
As it stands, we have a four to four tie, and the tiebreaker is not here, so let's bring it back to the next council meeting, and let the tiebreaker decide which way you want it should go.
Well, and I think even just separate from this vote, I, I agree with Nathan, if we could clean up, if you could propose the amendment to that ordinance with cleaned-up language that I think better clarifies this process, in case any future councils have similar questions.
Because I don't think you can change the ordinance right now that change...
No.
You're gonna do this.
Yeah, yeah, it's, they're separate things in my...
And maybe I was, maybe I was wrong by raising the question that wasn't there, but when I read that, I was going, oh, this is...
How do we address the...
Let's move on, Vicki, do you have...
...stating they're supposed to appoint their board members in the first meeting?
I think what happened is when that was rewritten, I think in 2011, because 27 is different, 2007 is different.
I'm trying to...
Reading them minutes right now.
They serve until the second Monday.
I think it was written wrong.
When are they supposed to hold the election?
What did the...
The swan?
The election of officers from the Drainage Board.
That's when they changed it from sewer board...
All right, that's...
Under, under the...
Their first regular meeting.
From a drainage board under to the sewer board.
They shall...
And that has not occurred.
They have a duty.
They tabled it today.
Says they shall.
So they need to have a special meeting and go ahead and correct their error on that, follow the law.
The vice president shall have the authority to act as president of the Drainage Board during the essence.
Which is what happened tonight. The vice president.
And that, that duty hasn't been, survived.
Right, they have not complied.
I don't know anything about any of that.
They haven't complied with the ordinance.
Anyway, okay.
Okay.
Apartment heads.
No, we're not done yet.
Oh, we're not done yet?
I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine. Even moving.
Finance Committee.
Okay.
Counselperson Gill, counselperson Samuel, counselperson Owen.
No, it's Ron, Nathan, Ed, and...
Okay, we just gotta do that.
How was Ron on the Finance Committee?
That's who's going to be, that's who...
That's who, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay. And then Clark County 911.
Well, don't we have to do the...
Motion for the last one.
Okay, go ahead.
Ron, Nathan, Ed, please.
Ron, Nathan, Ed, and me, and hopefully we'll meet the first Wednesdays of the month as they're needed, I guess we'll, at 3 o'clock.
When was the last time the Finance Committee met?
We haven't, it's just as needed.
Two years?
No, not two years.
One year.
Not last year, but...
Good try.
There was some meeting scheduled that just never happened.
Ask me, but the next two times I'm not available, so I was like that.
I tried, well, no, I, I, okay, so, okay, so for Finance, you got Ron, Nathan, Ed, and Lisa, do I have a motion?
Two moves.
Second.
Got a motion at second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries. Do we have the 911, because Scotty wishes to stay on, and I know he does a good job on that.
I was elected president in the first meeting, so...
Then you're off. Then he's off, take him off.
I'll make a...
Got a motion at second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries. And then the only one left was, in zoning, was Dave Stinson, and when you all appointed him, I never received the letter back, so I don't know if he's due or not.
Do we have to do solid waste, though?
I don't, I never have done solid waste.
Are the Clark County Solid Waste Board...
Motion to appoint Lisa Gill with solid waste.
Got a motion at second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed.
I think that's automatically the president, right?
Yes, it is.
I didn't know if we had to formally do that or not, I said that down on the...
Except ones that...
Pardon me, sir?
Stinson on planes, or BZA?
I'm so sorry, BZA.
Okay.
I apologize.
And who is that?
But I don't have his data, if anybody knows, would they throw it out for me?
We appointed him last year.
Yeah.
But you never got any paperwork about it.
Was it Ed that put him up? I don't remember.
I don't know, and I don't know if it's...
I think you...
It was, yeah, it was. It was last year.
Okay, so we got them all now?
2016. It was the end of 2016, I think, and Ed, and he came to the meeting and introduced himself, and then we voted.
So I don't know, yeah, that's all I have. Okay, thank you. So we'll move on, do we have any attorney comments, Mr. Wall?
You know, for all the times I've talked about how easy this has been, in one meeting it turned into full-time...
Turned into smart...
Making your, making your money, or something.
A couple of things real quick, there was an email that was sent for everybody to look at and consider in February, for an amendment to the arcs ordinance that requires everybody living in the city, and that would obviously not be, that's post facto, but that would be going forward, and then there, you all received also an email with an attachment And then, you all received also an email with an attachment of a letter, and there's a hard copy of it, from the ever-popular Drainage Board from the city of Jeffersonville regarding some issues that they've raised. Something that we'll take up in the first meeting February as well. I know Mr. Zastani has an ordinance he asked me to repair that he has had in his possession. And I think his job, which I guess I got notice in the beginning, is to be graduated on a new job. So I don't know if he will ask that that be sent out to be considered an ordinance. The ordinance is talked about, about reporting the top vendors, top employees.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So that's all I would have. And I'm still having fun.
Don't we do that? Oh, that requires it.
There was discussion, there was never an ordinance.
But we do it anyway.
Well, we wanna require it. The newspaper, basically, calls-
Calls and asks for it.
As for transparency.
And asked me to write something, I did.
So, okay, thank you.
Well, you all, I'm sure you all get it when he says, I sent him, he said, we're getting it.
So let me, so it'll be the public arts will be on there.
Public arts, as long as Mr. Samuel thinks that that language is appropriate.
First meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, and then what's the other one? It's top-
And put this, do you all wanna put this ordinance, we just talked about with the appointments for the-
Sure.
Well, prepare three hundred persons.
The ordinance you're talking about with the salaries, is that, I mean, don't we, we publish the salary ordinance? In its entirety?
It's my belief and conclusion that yes, everybody's get a salary, everybody's salary is probably correct.
It's, can I?
Well, you can go on Indiana Gateway and search it.
What it is, is it is on the Gateway, it is publicly documented on Gateway. What this is, is for the top vendors that we, that have the most money, the top 20, I think it is, and then the top employees.
Putting their names on how much an employee makes.
Yes, sir, yeah. It's already published in the paper.
It's like a publication that all the municipalities-
With their names on it?
Yes, sir.
But let me say, let me, so, is it just redundant what we're doing? Let me, it's highlighting the people that make the mess, so they can be looked at. Let me, let me read to you what the file is, it says.
All right, I just wanted to see how we treat our employees. It's all right.
Blurb or story or something?
Yeah, it's- It's advertised in January, February-ish, and then they also need to insert in the bottom. And it's all municipalities.
There's also like a Southern Indiana, like, economic outlook thing that includes it.
And the majority of them believe, and I hate to say this, but a lot of them are the police and fire that are at the top. And that's due to a lot of overtime and things like that, yes.
Well, it's also due to some retiree benefits. When somebody retires, you've got a firefighter that's worked for 30 years, and he takes his retirement and cashes out at the end of 33 years, and, you know, it shows in the paper that he made $200,000 as a firefighter. That's totally, that's totally misleading.
Yes, it is.
To get your retirement benefit, and to be blasted in the paper to say, well, he made a quarter million dollars, he's a firefighter. That's totally irresponsible. Make sure you let them know we feel that way.
And it will also say that, I think it's all available online anyway.
I can search any person's name in the entire state and find how much they make.
It does highlight someone in Matt's instance here. We had that discussion two years ago when they posted it. But just as much as I see your point, if we don't put it out, we would be the only municipality-
We gotta be transparent, but, man.
But it's not fully transparent.
Yeah, footnote, asterisk, because of retirement.
Do we mind, we all-
All I can say, guys, is he asked me to write, oh, I'm sure.
Larry didn't know what he was bringing up.
All right.
I spent my life as an offensive lineman. They told us where to go, and we were knocked down, and not ask any questions, okay?
If you didn't get that fast, let me get a helmet.
No department heads here that wish to speak. There's no public comments, so we move on to council comments. Councilperson White?
Thank you. Just wanna explain my vote. I think we had an unusual circumstance with the Drainage Board, in that we had a councilman that removed someone for a number of reasons. And out of respect for that councilman, that's, I voted no on that appointment. So it was out of respect, not out of disrespect for another councilman, that I voted no. I just want that to be clear. Thank you.
Councilperson Yon? Yes, I have two things. The first is that I was selected to be the governor's appointment to the juvenile justice advisory board for the state. So my appointment is representative of local municipalities in some of the legislation and funding surrounding juvenile justice. So my first board meeting for that is this week. But if any councilmembers have any input on that, I'm gonna be discussing, you know, with our sheriff department and some of our police officers and different issues. I know, obviously, the drug epidemic is a huge issue in our area, so looking at some programs and funding for those programs. But just so that the council's aware, if you know of anyone that's interested or, you know, wants to meet with me to discuss some of the work of that board, please let me know. And then the other thing, I would like to, I don't think we have a formal consensus on a workshop that less brought to our attention for the anti-sexual harassment training for the employees at the city of Jeff. We wanna bring in an external consultant, Carol Dawson, to conduct that training, who is, she's renowned, I guess, for this particular line of training. And I think probably with all councilmembers, and that this is very appropriate for the times, and I think a necessity, and it was Les' recommendation. And also at, I know Kim is a member of Southern Indiana SHRM, and I attend quite a few of their meetings as well. And it was a key takeaway, that if you're not doing sexual harassment training, you need to right now. So I think it's very pertinent that we do this. The line item that is needed would be $14,000 to conduct this training. And that would be every city of Jeff employee with specialized training for the leadership and managers for the city. And so I would just like to, I guess, state my support and see if we have a consensus where we can move forward and go ahead and get that date set, so that we don't lose this opportunity.
I know that Les was wanting that commitment so they can move forward in February. So do you want to put that forth in a motion that we give?
Several of the dates that she's proposed have already been taken, because I was working with her back in November and December anticipating this. So yes, we'll negotiate some dates. I just need the commitment that she will be paid and that there's funding available to do that. And then her and I will work out the dates and the schedule. It'll probably be the end of January, and then there's some dates in February.
I don't, I wasn't sure where we were, where there was the discussion of where the money should come from, per se.
I just can't commit to her and sign a contract, nothing, I want if there's any dollars to pay for it.
I don't know if there's that suggestion on the table, if we have to make that decision today, but I think it's needed.
Do you wanna make a motion that we allow them to move forward, to see if we can, they have the support? We'll have to discuss where the 14,000 come, but at least Les wants to know if this has the support or not, so they know how to move forward.
I support it.
I'll make that motion. I don't know if it needs to be a motion, or, we're not really voting on. I make a motion to move forward on securing a date for the anti-sexual harassment training.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Just discussion. I'm real hesitant, I understand Mr. Ellis has been pretty vocal about doing just additional appropriations. I would encourage us to look at, I'm supportive of the training. But across the entire city, we have a number of training budgets. I mean, very large training budgets. Seems to me like $14,000 could be used a little bit. You know, and there's some departments that are much larger, and maybe they can chip in a little more, based on their number of employees. The sewer department, typically, we charge them for parts of things. And I just, as we're looking for the money, rather than just saying, okay, let's just go take it out of our reserves, I encourage us to start saying, if we need this training, and I don't doubt we do, if we have training line items, let's try to target some. And then if there's other trainings later in the year that those department heads would like to go to, then they can come back, and at the end of the year, if we got the money, we say, go ahead and go, or halfway through.
I support that.
Just a thought on-
14,000, did that include like police and power, everybody?
Every employee. And, I mean, I'm in the training industry, and that number is right in line with, I mean, my company would probably charge more.
Can I make a-
Well, it's only $40 an employee, more or less.
Well, now, look, that's for the sheriff's losses of 100 for employee.
Yeah, I mean, it's a reasonable dollar, but I agree with you, I think.
People, your cost would only be $800, I mean, give or take, $800, and you should be able to find one.
Yeah, I agree. Are we still-
Heather, is that something you can do, or is that something that you would be doing, or somebody else in the administration finding that money?
Like I've got four.
Divided by employee, yeah.
You all will have to instruct me how you want, I mean, if you want it divided out by how many employees are in each department, and then-
Does each department have a training budget? That's my first question.
No? Most of them do. Majority of them do.
Yeah.
So, I mean, at that point, then, yeah.
I mean, at least we can start, start there.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, yeah. Because, yeah. Because I guarantee we have the money in training budgets. And then I would rather replenish it later if we need to. But that's one opinion, just one opinion.
So all those, any other discussion? All those in favor saying if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
It's a new form of date. We're just trying to secure the date, and then we can talk about funding.
Sorry.
Okay.
Aye. We're supportive.
All those opposed, motion carries. I know I'm a little confusing. Okay, so is that all you had, Councilperson Yon?
That's all I had.
Councilperson Maples?
First, I'd like to congratulate Councilperson Yon on her appointment by the governor.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Sounded real fancy.
Sounds important.
But on a serious note, if you need any help, am I personal where I work, feel free to reach out.
Yeah, you're the go-to person, actually, so, great.
I'd be happy to help. And then, I know we had a ton of discussion about the Drainage Board tonight, but, Mr. Walter, what would your suggestion be for us to get them in compliance with the ordinance as it's written?
You know what's amazing, you asked that question.
Yeah, I didn't think you saw that coming.
Because as we've been saying here, see the fancy spring that she keeps messing with? I would like to begin to find out what creates the city's advisory Drainage Board by statute. Because to be really blunt and candid with you right now, if you send me the statute that creates it, because right now, and I'm just sitting here buzzing through, I'm not even sure I can find a statute that creates it.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the sewer board right now. That's where I started. I'm that guy that knows what the public works statutes are, and I'm looking, I'm down to chapter 27. So I would like to be able to find what creates the Drainage Board itself, and see if this is clear to what the statute is.
Because as it's written now, we're 16 days out of compliance, or whenever the first, it was the second, so we're 14 days out of compliance. I said on the 911 board, we elected ours the first time. I feel like there's maybe getting pushed back for a reason. And the ordinance clearly states the officer should be appointed first meeting of the year.
Mr. Walter, if you don't mind, what I'll do is go back from, because it was, started when I was on the council.
I think there are two things.
There is a time when there was a-
What you're talking about is to figure out if it's a legitimate board. I believe the councilman's question was, what do they need to get in compliance with the current ordinance, the current law, which is they need to-
They need to convene a special meeting to get in compliance with the ordinance?
Have the election?
Whatever, I think they need, well, they've got, they've got an attorney, and I would make sure-
They were gonna have their elections, but Darren spoke up and said, because the majority of, there was five that were up for the three at large, and there was two districts, which were five, that they didn't know would be reappointed or not.
So then maybe we need to change when they do their elections.
And I don't remember everything that Darren said, but Darren is the one that-
When we have, everybody reappointed last meeting, except-
We had eight members there wanting to resign.
Everybody was appointed the one.
For tonight's-
So I don't know if they had appointment-
Does there meet first meeting before?
It's after, they meet Tuesdays.
Well, they got a meeting tonight.
They meet the Tuesday after our council meetings.
So they should've had an election today?
Yes.
But that, but that says their first meeting.
By ordinance, they should've had an election Tuesday, January 2nd. And now another-
First meeting.
And now another meeting has expired.
Did they have a meeting on January 2nd?
Yes.
Okay, well, then it said the first meeting.
And it did not occur, and then it did not occur again tonight.
I guess that the ordinance is pretty clear. That's clear, that part of it's clear.
So you should keep that part when you rewrite it.
Okay.
Well, I'm not proposing that it doesn't get moved back a little bit, but if the ordinance says this, then that's what we need to be doing, that's why we make them. If we're gonna be breaking our own rules, it makes zero sense to me.
I understand, and that's clearly-
I mean, we didn't vote to suspend the rules, they didn't, this is what it says.
So they could have their election.
And I'll end with that. So I propose to, we need to get that down.
I will send a, I will send a letter to their attorney saying that the council has requested that they follow the ordinance.
Or you can just put my name on it. I don't know if I've got the support of the full council for that.
Put my name on it.
That's true. Put Callie's on it, I see her signature.
I like rule following.
Or you could just send the ordinance and highlight it and say, look into that, so.
I'll, I'll just know that that's, that's a question that's been asked.
I think you know there are-
I think you know where to send it, so.
I'll do that, I can sign that down. Then it's not golf season, so I know how you see this.
Also, thanks to the police, fire, street department, all the city services. We've, we had a lot of snow, and I saw very little problems throughout this week at all. I was very, very, very happy.
Councilperson Hopkins?
Nothing.
Councilperson Owen?
Echo Councilperson Maples on props to the street department, police and fire. Everybody was out in the weather. City services have run smoothly, it seems, and streets have been kept clean. Wanted to mention, in case it didn't get brought up, the MLK breakfast, sponsorship breakfast